...meeting to order. Where should we have Roquan to make sure there's a call in? Nate Wilson?
Here.
Adam Powell?
Here.
Jessica Fallalar?
Here.
Dorian Palmer?
Here.
No, you're not loud. Okay, Walter. Uh, next will be the prayer, Jessica, please, everyone please stand, would you please plead as in.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for a chance to be here today to help do some of your work, and especially in this time of great spiritual, uh, history with the birth of your son, we ask for discernment and guidance as we make decisions, and we ask for peace here and in all the world.
Would, uh, everyone please stand, Jerry, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, of course, the next thing on the agenda is a brutal minutes, which is October the 25th, the Beer Board, the, um, Beer Board, October the 25th, November the 15th, because of public hearing, and November the 15th, special meeting, said, we have the minutes to give out any corrections for those, would you want to do those together? For Andrea's order?
Do them all at once?
Since I do them together, and I make a motion to a first.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Opposed? Okay, committee reports, chief?
I've got thirty-two arrests, but now that goes from all of November, and the first thirteen days of December, but December already, we have thirteen arrests, and it's been busy. And, of course, come holidays, understand, lock your doors, don't go to the gas station, like, it's already starting, people just come in, grab things, so please, lock your doors at home, lock your doors when you go to a gas station, because the tests are gonna go up always near the holiday season.
We, we still have the two positions that are open that you put?
One.
One, so you hired a guy?
And, uh, maybe, one's coming back January 1st, one, we don't know, but he's hurt, and I've got a, uh, young guy coming in, hopefully this week.
You're hosting those, um, the website, she's hosting them on Facebook, correct? I mean, that's what you're, I don't know, I just know, well, I know that you're telling Abby that we have positions, and she's been doing that, and I have a lot of time with that, John, you didn't, but I'm just not sure.
But, uh, yeah, like I said, it's probably this week.
Does anyone have anything for the chief?
So are they, these are, these are post-certified arrests?
Yes, uh, one, he works here, he's just been deployed for a year, and he's coming back, um...
So he is coming back, okay.
Yeah, well, that's what we didn't know, he's coming back, so he's coming back first, he'll be on day shift.
Great.
And then, we got a guy hurt, that's, and then this other guy, he's a young guy, he's moving, he's actually in the process of moving down here, because he's, because he's from Cleveland, and he's in the process of moving.
I got you.
So he'll be, hopefully, hopefully, like I said, he's got some top, was, I don't wanna say he's got, you know, we got top two.
Are there, is there a clearinghouse for law enforcement jobs where we could be posting this, do you, are you aware of any, so the people that are coming out of the academy can be looking for jobs?
Well, what you do, they have a spot, they have academy, not Toledo, obviously, because they're sponsored by, well, I mean, the sponsor, if I sponsor you, Nate?
Sure.
I'm not gonna be happy if somebody goes to Toledo and say, hey, I want you to come to, you know, Tracy, but the, the, the non-sponsored academies, yes, they have an open slot, like a time we can actually go, like me and Tony, so, hey, um, Chief, I'm on a, you know, and you do your steel, but yes, you can do that, without getting run off and cussed at, and, but, but, that's just on their own level.
So something like their options beyond Facebook?
Yes, yes, there's, there's options, yes, sir, I saw your break.
We have, we have, we have the orders, the public hearing, I mean, once your citizens get to speak, let's go through the process, then you can ask him the questions, he'll still be here, okay?
We'll have to wait till the end.
Yes, please, if you don't mind, that's just to keep the orders, so we can keep the thing flowing, you know, uh, see if you'll just stay, then Mr. White has a question, what he gets to citizens here. All right, Art Morin?
You've received the, um, monthly report, I don't have anything to add at this time. Did you know we're discussing several topics? It's scheduled to come, uh, mid-January, if, the famous if, if somebody thinks, all the parts are here, and it falls into place, and also waiting for parts, uh, at a previous meeting, uh, to repair the gauges and, um, throttles that we have on our existing car, and Billy Mountain's doing that.
And there's one change on here, I know this, we decided that the police would be doing the lip assist, and the fire department would be supporting their efforts, correct?
Yes, yes.
And that's being handled differently, Jerry said they would do the lip assist, and they would call the fire department or PMS to take care of it, thankfully, we're still doing it, but they're being taken, um, because of the changes in the fire department orders.
And an ambulance would respond if there's a medical issue.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Art, to Reg, Jessica, do you want to do that till we get, um, Dominique?
Yes. So there's going to be a meeting for the baseball program, January the 10th, at five o'clock here at City Hall, and, uh, this will be to discuss the next season, which starts probably around, uh, February, early, early March, and we're expecting to have people sign up for about four different teams, there's the T-ball for six years of age, a coach and pitch type ball for eight-year-olds, and then ten, and then twelve-year-olds, and, uh, we're also going to be looking for people to renew their banners for the baseball field. If you've had a baseball banner before, the cost will be a hundred and fifty dollars to renew your banner, and if you want to have a new banner, if you're a new client, the cost will be two hundred dollars. And Dominic Gilbini will be in charge of the baseball program this year, but he'll be getting help from all of us at the same time. That's all I have for tonight.
Then, um, utilities?
Art and Doug have been working out of water plants, they've got part of the plumbing stuff in for the high-service pump, uh, I think they've received the motor, but they just haven't got up here to start installing it yet, it's quite, they brought all the water in, everything, the update, so anytime we need the rest of the material, we're gonna be in to start installing the other high service. But we would have to, we've been running on water.
And what about the software, have they given you that, when they're gonna have that now?
No, I asked Jerome, he was supposed to call them, I didn't ask him to give them off, but anyway, we got in all the computer system and all that stuff, we got all that in, just waiting on them coming into the third one.
And we, we, uh, fifty-two thousand for that?
Yeah.
I gotta build for that, to them.
They, they've received it, but they, they just had to kind of, start putting in yet.
So, I need to hold on to it?
Yeah, I believe I will, let me get with Jerome in the morning, and have him, whoever he's been speaking with, give him a call.
Is this this pump that we, okay, months ago, this is now coming in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just hard to get, it's hard to get through, they had, I think they had to build the motor, because it's big.
What about, what about that wall, or whatever it was, at the same time we were talking about, you know, there was something else that was deteriorating, what was it?
The stilling well.
What's?
Yeah.
So what's up with that?
Well, we haven't never gotten no pressure, but...
Were we gonna wait and see if some of that, uh, American recovery, that money could go?
Right, right.
Because we did the GIS system, so that we have to put indoors the way that Beth Johnson advises, and also Travis, in which that started.
They were gonna do the outside wall too, you know, on that other tank, in wet wells, where you're talking about the holes that's in the wall, that's in the wet well.
And the hydrant bids out, it'll be open, um, is it nine o'clock?
It'll be Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning.
Okay.
I didn't have the time.
Okay, so we're planning on doing it at nine, because it's, it's...
If you have any bids, we'll have any up.
Okay, for the, um, hydrant systems, being completed and maintained, and something on the GIS system?
We've been working with, uh, me and Keith, working with the engineering company, these manholes for the GPS, we've got some that, we may dig up some, we may not, just, we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do, where they're at, where they need to be, uh, I've talked to that girl today, she won't know if we can go out, if we went out behind the sand, because it's, we hadn't, or we had that big main to break, and then we got, the, all the small lift stations, we gotta get with them to ride around and locate all of our small lift stations, like, where they, but then, but they, they've got, they've got our manholes and stuff on our system now, but we've got them on our tablet, we can pull them up and look at them.
So why would you have to dig any out?
Where they're covered up.
Where they're covered up?
Covered up, yeah.
Okay.
See, like, down behind Jim Sanders, and, uh, Hawk Street, been covered up in gravel, so, so... Just look, where they can inspect it, what it is, dig it up where they can inspect it.
Okay, so when this company came in and did this leak test, what was the results of all?
I haven't got all that yet, we haven't got it all together yet, Travis, see, this is still part of it, with manhole inspections and stuff, and smoke testing.
But it's all done, we just haven't got the results?
Yeah, well, there's, the crew's still up here, like I say, they're not finished up on the small, uh, ground pump, lift station stuff, they're gonna get with us, and go around and locate them where they can pin on, then it pretty well will be done, I mean, all of it will be done, then, first weekend, January, I think they told me they're gonna start opening water valves, you know, water lines, water valves, so...
You think we're in brief surprises?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Every date okay?
Yeah, it's going pretty good, yeah, I mean, I'm sure the smoke testing shows, I know several that they found, but nothing major that I know of, uh, just small ones.
When we started this process, we also met with the assembly, which the assembly has now hired LP, the engineering firm, and they're going to do...
LGA, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the LPA, they're also going to have their entire system GIS, and they're gonna find other problems, so they can update the maintenance on that, they started that a couple of weeks ago, didn't they?
Well, they started smoke test, smoking test this last Monday, then it come all the way, and I think they done, we even started a smoke test in Wind, I think, I think.
And then, um, we're gonna meet again Wednesday, if they could find it, with Tracy City, because Tracy City, we've informed him, there's some on out there, and say what their plan of action is, so they're still pursuing and working on it, all the connections done.
Jessica, we appreciate y'all, when, uh, like today, when we have a thing, line to break, you know, when y'all put it on, I mean, it's some different thing, but people will be, they'll pay for the passion, the work.
Well, they've been on the website twice, but we informed her, anytime like that happens, even with the dump, so with the dump out there?
Right.
Whenever the compactor was broken, if we know, she's gonna put it on there and say when it's fixed, you know?
Well, hopefully, when somebody calls in, and just like Dory called, and that's the reason she didn't have a water feed, I went, I went straight down there and checked the two-inch line, then, when I was down there, the water plant called, and he said that the high-service pump was squealing bad, he had to cut it off, so that told us it's on the main line somewhere, and, you know, we, we just, we had to go look, and what we pretty well know where it's gonna be, by the sounds of the pump.
You know, down in, can we please make that?
Should've been a little hunting game for a while, before it did.
Y'all made quick work of it.
Well, it, it ain't, you know, actually, you find it, it's just like today, we found the pipe we tuck out, we cut a hundred and thirteen inches of the pipe out, and when we tuck it out of the ground, it was like this, where they laid it on the rock, just laying it on the rock, then bed it up, and then pipe been there, only just bowled and just flipped. Well, you know, chiseled it out, so it moved in, yeah.
So, in that instance, are you able to then bed the new one in, or you just gotta put it back where it was, don't you?
Yeah, we just put, well, what we done, we dug, before the rock was, it's sandstone, so we broke it loose and crushed it up, and then laid our pad.
So it won't happen?
Yeah, yeah, where they did, they just laid it on the rock.
Is Travis telling you when the GIS is gonna be done?
No, no.
Nobody's coming up Wednesday, so we'll see if we can get up, so I did that, and see if they're ready. Y'all have anything else for Mr. Paul?
I don't think it's him, but on this hybrid thing you were talking about, giving the bids out, I thought we had a company that was gonna do that.
It went over the...
We just talked to a company.
Yeah, I mean, you had to do it, but we cannot go, it had to be bid out because the amount was, was, it was over ten thousand, so there has to be a problem bid, so...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bud, we have Street of Army?
Yeah, as far as I know, we've, we're patching right now, we, we've got coal mix, trying to get some of the hope patched in the roads, and, uh, doing our leak pickup, it's going pretty good, we got delayed on it, waiting on the parts, pretty soon, so...
I think that people were asking, of course, you didn't know the schedule, because the park was down tuned, it was like everybody else getting the park in, but you actually started doing it where ditches are clogged, because water was not running through it, and then, he said he came up with a pattern, he'll go one time big time, he'll start on Grand County, the west end?
Yeah.
And then he worked his way through, and then the same thing on Marion, but it's not a, really a service we offer, it's something they do because everybody pushes it out, so it's sort of like Sparkle Week, it goes through one time, you know, and that's it, but he may go back to the house, correct?
Well, we have to go back to the ditches, where like the leaves blow out of the woods, and, you know, stop your covers back up, when it comes to big rain, you know, you gotta go back there, and, like Lardley Road, you have to do it about three different times, it's just a one ongoing thing, till everything settles down, but it's, we're on Lardley now, and that, we're, we're about to get most of it done, so...
So y'all have anything else for Bud?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, building inspector's not here tonight, he said he didn't have anything, um, and he was sick, so he said that, um, he had nothing for tonight, so we'll go into, is this a little bit, it's supposed to be new business, we have ordinance, which would, what? Okay, which would be, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two, budget amendment, ordinance admitting the budget for the town of Montegoal, by the mayor, Paul Givens, it would be, um, well, it's actually, we discussed this, but of course, we just got the job descriptions tonight, and we said we would schedule a meeting, which will be announced, which will be a public meeting, to discuss if it goes forward, a full-time position, which will be our fire chief, and it would also be code enforcement, they would have both titles, but it'd be a full-time position, they would have the salary, and social security, veteran, community care, health insurance, retirement contribution, so the total, how much is it, is this the total amendment, that what they're receiving now? Okay, so, I don't know what it is, do we? Okay, oh, because it's two different ones, so, let's do the math here, pretty simple.
It's worth being forty-five thousand dollars.
Forty-five thousand total for that position. So, um, we'd have to do a first reading, of course, we need a second reading to do this, and we would, if the board chooses to do this, we will work on the job descriptions and the position.
So, Mayor, I'm noticing that this ordinance has an increase of, just right at forty-five thousand, but there's no decrease on the other side of the line, so what are we taking this money out of, where's this money coming from?
Well, a percentage of that would come out of what, what? Twenty-two, forty, um, four-nine-four, kind of, fire department, as you just said.
Comes out of the line item that's already in the fire department?
Well, a percentage of it does, and now they're doing the insurance, and, yeah, higher premiums are now being paid, because you, this position, which was seven fifty, will be in August, into this. Are you, but you're not only doing the seven fifty?
But are we just gonna print the money up? I mean, where does it come from?
Well, out of signage, we discussed the time opportunities, other services we're missing, I know we've had many discussions, Mr. Murray, I will ask you to come back, because we've discussed this before, in the presentation for this position, for that.
Yes, uh, there are funds, as an example, we are filing insurance claims, we've collected in excess of two thousand so far, there's another close to twelve thousand coming between one of the truck fires and the interstate fire of the camp, and I've spoken to both of those, the smokehouse fire is still under review, and Travis has been talking to them back and forth to answer their questions that the adjuster might have, uh, as well as whatever is generated from code enforcement, so there, there is a stream that we've been working on to get some money towards this venture.
And the dictation of signage, we have figured for the ones that have applied and approved right now, there's probably fourteen to fifteen thousand, not counting the small signs that we have not charged for, or the vendors, or the permits, or the codes that are not being reviewed and taken care of, because nobody's there to do it, at one time, there was twelve, fifteen thousand being invested in that, so it will pay for itself on a temporary basis, but this is the First Amendment, and also, we're providing those services that where we're not getting complaints, I mean, if you got a couple complaints this week, then somebody has to go find out, we're already short of police officers doing their job, and one time, this person would also be responsible for doing that, and it's generating money automatically from the stock.
And if I may, excuse me, you're cutting it in half, because by the time all of this passes in January, you have only February through June, it's for this, then your next fiscal starts in July, so you're not looking for forty-five now, is my understanding.
No, this is just a half.
Is that, so it's, um, February, March, April, May, June?
So this is a budget amendment that would cover a full year's salary, even though we only think we're gonna spend a half-year salary?
That's the way.
That's my understanding, but you're, you're setting, you're setting the salary for the future, if you don't spend it all, then you don't do it, it goes to the next year.
It's pretty simple to do it this way, Nate, if you wanna do the twenty-four, four-nine, it'd be a half-year salary, I mean, it's two different numbers, correct? Because it's for one full year, so...
As I understood it, you're setting the stage and establishing the full year, of course, you do the arithmetic to get you to the next fiscal.
This is, this is just to show potential candidates that we would actually have it in the budget, that's the slot that's funded.
That's exactly one, and as you know, we met with the candidates tonight, which was the chief and assistant chief, which we do not recommend, we're in, the assistant chief said that he would be willing to take the position without a contract, if we develop it and come up with a job description, he realizes we cannot do a contract for the town of Montegoal, uh, and he would be willing to take that chance if we create this, again, we're talking about having another meeting to do the job description, which would be ones being developed by Intas, and ones being developed by Steve Kraus, which is a, our, what it specializes with, the state of Tennessee with Intas as well, and amended that to the council, to go ahead and pursue.
I, I, I got, I got that, and I, I think, I think we're moving in, in the right realm for that, but just from a budgetary standpoint, I don't understand, are we just printing this forty-five thousand, or is it coming out of operating reserves, is it coming out of capital reserves, is it coming out of?
It will have to come out of operating, it wouldn't come out of capital, as far as reserves, but it'd have to come out of the general funds, but then the money that we're receiving would go back into it, great, this Tony increased the budget on, um, what, thirty-two hundred right now, and we're not even getting the house fires, house fires also pay, we don't have the people managing this stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry, increasing the budget, what, money to be, to be collected?
Yes.
I have twelve thousand coming in from two fire claims that we had filed, that has not been paid, we've got about two thousand or something, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, from insurance claims already collected.
Okay, so, I think I now understand it, this is a year's worth of salary to go in to cover a half year's worth of potential salary, if we were to hire somebody, coming out of operating capital, is that, is that right?
We're laboring a first, um, which is already coming in, but it's only going half, half of a year, so it's what we need to, for...
Okay, so we really only need half of this to actually make it work?
That's exactly, yeah, we just said that, we need half of this to do it, uh, we do know, and, actually, Earl is going to meet with this individual and help as well, because we know that there's several businesses that have not paid for signage, and they're now, even if it's a small sign, those signage have to be paid for, vendors, permits have to be paid for, there's multiple things we're missing, which are multiple thousand dollars, as well as, as complaints that are not being taken care of, because the police can't do it all.
I understand, we need a code enforcer, I understand, we need a full-time police chief, I get all that.
Fire chief, yeah.
Or fire chief, I mean, my problem is, okay, we've got all this money now that is gonna be coming in from the smokehouse or this fire, but what happens next year? You know, if we don't have all this money coming in, are we gonna be okay hiring this person, as far as the budget goes, next year?
I would suggest, and I, I certainly don't wanna answer for you all, but I would suggest that's part of the budget committee's job, I don't think there's a question, as you say, that we need these positions.
Right.
Um, unfortunately, there will probably be other fires, sadly, but, um, it's like the hospital, if you're not sick, you're not helping us, you know, if there's not a fire, you're not helping us, that's a bad way of looking at things, but I'm sure there will be other incidents where we would either do mutual aid with another department, or they would help us, or we would take care of ourselves, but my feeling is, with the expansion of the town, as it develops and grows, there will certainly be a need for these positions.
Well, there's a need for it now, actually.
Yes, agreed, and where the money comes from?
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, you gotta start somewhere, I, I get that.
You had a qualified person that said, that is a fire chief, has fourteen years with the state, and has been doing this since he was twenty-two, so that's twenty-something...
Well, he's devoted, I, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, there's no question, so the qualification?
And we can guarantee him that, you know, one of us is not gonna die tomorrow, but we can tell, we tell him, and he knows going up front, that, um, if this moves forward, then we cannot give you a contract, and he said, I'm willing to take that chance, but we cannot, and he knows that, so he knows everything going in, actually, he told us tonight, as you go on the workshop, he wanted to take the job, because he says he can build this department to pay for itself plus more, and I trust him that much, look what he's done, went to the all-in.
I have no doubt that he can take the job.
But he did, he's been failing too, I mean, like Reagan, I found out today, and I don't think it's been, what, four years, there's two thousand dollars, which two thousand dollars, people say is all of money, but two thousand dollars that we haven't been applying for in probably five years, four years, and all we have to do is a request, and we can get that money every year.
Is he gonna stay on as Pelham Fire Chief also?
Yes, but that's good, because we already have automatic aid with, um, Pelham, and that also gives us bodies to fight a fire, until we move that.
But he won't leave, and, so, that's part of the job description, he will not leave that one.
If there's a serious fire in Pelham, he'd go, but probably our department would go, if it was serious, if it was removing a tree from a highway, no, that's not a major incident, in my opinion.
So, we need, if we're gonna do the first reading on this, and I was saying for, first we needed for this budget, would we make that one change, and do the twenty-two, four-nine-five, because that's for...
A half year.
Half year?
Half year, rather than four years.
Half year, instead of whole year, because we're gonna start a budget process, and pretty much, we're gonna start it at a time, and that gives him... We can't change it?
Well, just because it passes, you don't have to spend it all, is one thought I have, and the other thought is, you're creating the slot, as we say, and it's funded, now, the fact that we're halfway through the year, we can spend half the money, so I...
So you're saying we can do the first reading, and then by the second one, how do we do that?
We can't change the amendment, so we would have to go ahead and okay before we go further.
With the first reading, yeah.
You can't pass this one, if we're not gonna do that, but...
Yeah, it goes to twenty, it's not ending this year.
So, is this a problem?
No, it says twenty-one, twenty-two, is that an issue, because it is... She's in, no?
And that would be the half a year, right?
Yeah, it would only go to, yeah.
Because you're only using half the money.
So we would not have to amend this resolution?
Right, we would not have to amend this, we go with that, but Charlie goes to spend half the money, because it's only a half year.
When you do the new budget, we didn't want you to...
Okay, and we'll have a job description, and some performance benchmarks, um, we can put together this next job.
Well, with all due respect, I plan on meeting with them, they had another matter to attend to, but I have copies, I'll give them copies, get them thinking and writing with their red pencil, get Steve down here, and that's, and I would urge you all to meet as soon as possible to continue it, but as I've said earlier, this is step one, and there But as I've said earlier, this is step one, and there are many steps to go before we get to January's meeting, but we have to start somewhere and do something somehow.
And while we're looking at the, at the calendar now, we might as well go ahead and address this. If we can have a workshop, we can do this, we can decide morning, day or evening on the 10th of January, that we will just go over the job descriptions with Steve Kraus, if we can have him, you yourself, and the bar, the bar chief and the assistant chief are in.
What was that date?
January the 10th.
It's a Monday, I don't remember.
At what time?
My count.
We just want to just announce it later.
Yeah, I think we need to schedule it because we need to talk to Steve Kraus about that.
You want me to call him or are you going to call?
You call him. Because you can, you can get ones on your end, ones to plan on. You give us a timeframe and we'll go from there. That is the first reading, yes.
I guess the first reading. I'm all for this. I just want to make sure that if we're creating a new department head position, we're thinking about it and creating a process that will outlast us so that.
Oh, I'm coming.
People beyond us will say, wow, you know, those guys really thought that out and the, and gals thought that out and did a good job. And so I'm not, I'm not at all questioning the need. I just want to make sure we're going about it in a logical way.
No, and I understand that. Quite frankly, it probably will apply soon related to all department heads, but somebody wrote something for the police chief and the border department and the utility head and all that, so now we're going to do the fire department.
Well, it's the job description.
It's for the job description and coordinating it with the city ordinances, because that was one of the three issues that were discussed and we have that paperwork here that's in your packet, so please start pleading tomorrow morning and so on.
And so I wasn't, I wasn't clear from the workshop, are we actually going to begin the process to change our charter to allow for a paid chief?
We need to look at the charter while we're doing our strategic planning and our town hall meetings, that's another component, and see the elements that we want to change so we can address them all at once because they have to go before legal, they have to go before the comp trouble, and then they have to go before, see, they have to be approved through the state process because it was, Alan, you remember, I know there were a couple of items, it took about 18 months to get it done.
Yeah.
About, and it, it took quite a while to get it done, so that's something we need to look at and as many as we want to address, we need to do those then.
Well, that's one, I think if we're going to recruit and maintain a professional fire department, we need to offer the candidate, whoever that candidate is, that's that type of permanent, so I'd like to go ahead and start that process if we can.
Yeah, and then we can, and that's part of the review and I agree with you 100%. And again, if we had met with Steve Kraus for the Intas specialists, you have Greg kind of brought it to our attention, and then as I said tonight, air firemen have, are five or six, but a lot of departments are down. We've had guys go out one at a time in a truck that they could not call anyone because no one was there. We have forestry people working right now, they could not leave their job, and that's too dangerous. And I told them, if it's not life or death, or it's a structural house fire, you don't go to the interstate when a truck's burning because one person trying to man a fire, they said how dangerous it is, we don't want somebody killed on our department because we don't have, well, we're the full-time chief. And Travis told us, you know, that, he said, I can develop that backup between, get away with Swan, uh, Swanee, he's going to work with him, and with Pelham. He said, I can have two or three people on a fire at a time.
So I know that was an issue with a Montegoal city employee not being able to respond to a fire call that may have led to that. Is that something that we figured out, how to, how to make sure?
John is going to meet with them and discuss it. He was talking, he came up with just brush fires and certain things, you know, but no, he's only said if the person needs to go, if it's life or death, there's, you know, something, not just a brush fire, then yes, he will work it out to where that individual can go and come back.
Okay, good, good.
So they've already discussed that, brought it in, but that was something internally in the department that basically could work out for the only two of them.
Great.
The problem was, was that the individual employee was doing regardless. Anytime their picture went off, they were leaving, and John said he can't, which is true, he was utility director. He wasn't trying to minimize the fire department. He was just saying we couldn't, you know, we can't just go because there's a brush fire across the street.
So John's developing a policy to see what type of calls would allow this person to leave their work and go respond and what types would not raise to that, kind of similar to what we're talking about with.
Yes, exactly.
Travis, if he were to get this job and what, what Pelham fires he would respond to and what, what Pelham calls he would not respond to, is that the same thing?
No, no, they'll sit down and have the discussion what works for the department and then they can be put in writing. And while you're bringing that up, we have each of one of our contacts, whether it be roads or it be utilities or it be, they are now working on job descriptions and they're going to submit us that are with Intas. Just like, if you look at these two, one was submitted from Hana, which is our admin side of the house, and another was Steve Kraus for us to review and to put into a job description. So those are being done. Something else that we've been working on, we want to complain.
And I would say this, just so you understand, responding to a fire, you drive the truck and then you have to know how to work the pumps and the gauges, otherwise you're going to not get water. So there, there are things that, speaking to them, they want certified operators, certified drivers, which goes beyond a driver's license, and I'm sure you're aware of this, so it will take some doing.
And just one other thing I do want to bring, and I'll go right after the workshop, is 109. We've had a lot of people contact all of us, but, and of course, we know the larger donations, but as of date, as far as on the fire truck, which we took the money out of capital improvements, we have received 109,000 dollars because the people say they're, they see we are committed to do something from Montegoal and it's not done yet, so we'll close, I'm thinking probably by March is when it's coming in, because I've had several people contact me. And then everybody's going to think, you know, they're getting lighter, but she's doing all that, but it's been 109,000 dollars at this point, which is really good for what we're trying to do.
Again, yeah, I, I agree. And again, from a budgetary standpoint, I'm assuming all those donations have now gone into operating funds, and they'll need to, by budget amendment, we'll need to move those back into capital reserves to make sure that all the people who donated are, are, can be confident that their donations were, were they.
Yeah, and that's what we tell them we would do, but she's just anticipating one of the last letters that went out, the ones that contacted town hall and sent emails saying probably, I mean, more money can come in for a project, but what we've got and what we're doing.
Okay.
So, but that's very, well, it makes you feel a little bit about your job, that people trust us enough that you're going to do what you're supposed to with it, with the fines, and we are, you know. So back to, Mooney, I want to do, what's the willing counsel on this project?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 21-22 on first reading, the budget ordinance amendment.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No, but we do need to change the paper from 2022 to 2021.
Open the first reading.
No.
No, we answered next year. Okay, I see what you're saying there.
No, it's partial reading.
Yeah, okay, that's wrong. Was there any other discussion? We'll do a real call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Your next, yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now next is ordinance 21-23.
Excuse me, is that it?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, this, I'm getting there.
That's right, I know, I wanted to get the final ballot. Thank you very much.
You're going to call Steve and see if he can come up on the 10th and meet with us.
And whatever time he suggests, or?
I think you'd go with Steve's schedule on this one. He'd come late.
That's fine.
You know, sometimes he has come late, sometimes, but let's see. Probably afternoon's work best for most people.
Baseball meeting at 5:00.
Yeah, well, the baseball meeting's at 5:00, so can we see what we can do in the morning and maybe y'all can take off? Does that work?
Sure.
Thank you all very much.
I take off too. We just don't work when it's, so, all right. Ordinance number 21-23, an ordinance to amend section 501 of zoning ordinance for the town of Montegoal, Tennessee to include additional residential land use in R3, high-density residential districts. Comments?
So what this ordinance does, if I'm understanding it correctly, is it allows any upon appeal?
No, I think it's a case by case basis. No, it's a case by case basis. Each one will be reviewed by the planning commission. Janet, is that not correct, the way they submitted it?
That's correct.
It'll be reviewed by the planning commission before it's recommended onto the town, and then the town can still, town council.
This doesn't say that.
Is that not what?
I don't remember what it says.
Here, this is the one that, we did this one.
This is, be it ordained, this is changing schedule 501 of permitted uses to be amended as shown in attachment one. This amendment permits the following land uses in the R3.
Yeah, because right now it can be duplexes in condos right now. They did change that one, and they said, why couldn't you have a single home residence? It didn't make any sense not to allow a single home. So you're correct, there was discussion of both, and I went at the last this planning commission meeting or the last meeting y'all had.
This is a blanket change, not a, not a use upon review?
Right, exactly, exactly, because it didn't make a lot of sense.
Right, and once you look at this part of it, that's where it all makes sense.
So, but this is blanket, not use upon review?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
On this one, yes.
That makes, that makes sense.
Because I think, was it Mr. Maxwell had a piece of property that he could not use that was residential and he could not even, he came and he was wanting to extend the footprint, and he cannot do it the way this, this.
That was in commercial, that was in commercial, and I don't think we dealt with that yet.
Well, I'm not, but he had another one, and also, there was a couple of houses that were robbed before us that had to be, this needed to be changed, but like.
Jerry Van Huger wanted to do single family in an R3. I mean, it makes sense.
No, so.
But I think we still need to deal with that commercial.
He hasn't brought it back before the planning commission has.
He hasn't been back yet.
He hasn't been back, has he, Janet? No.
That would be a use upon appeal. That's what we were talking about, a use upon appeal, to allow somebody currently residential but zoned commercial to improve their residential property.
Correct, because it was already there.
Yeah, that makes sense too. Didn't know where it went.
We were waiting for him to bring it back now that the generals made a suggestion and Garrett has with our planner. So, all right, do we have, what's the willing counsel on this one? Ordinance number 21-23.
I'll make a motion, we approve on first reading ordinance number 21-23.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next ordinance is, ordinance 21-24, rezoning from C3 to R3, which is Deals. This was discussed, it was recommended by the planning commission for us to do this. I don't know when or how it was. You can see the parcel property, but there is residential all the way around it, so it was technically spot zoned, which as we know is not allowed to be done. And ordinance 21-24, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the town of Montegoal, Tennessee to rezone partial parcels 0.10 in Marion County tax note 022, from C3 interchange to commercial district to R3 identity residential district. And if you look, it's on Trussell Road.
And Garrett had recommended this being changed to R3.
I don't know how it became, he didn't know how it became C3. That was on.
Just that one section, I would say.
Yeah, just that.
It's that one lot.
Well, there's.
Rick's too, because Kern's is right over there. Yeah, he has three lots, Kern's though.
And we're, that's the next ordinance.
Yeah, that's the next one because he was allowed to buy the property with a house on it, but it happened, so.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 21-24.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? And then with ordinance number 21-25, rezoning C3 to R3, it's the property right next to Deals? In the same recommendation? Yes, yes. Yeah, that would be Josh Kern. And if you look, you got the map and the parcel there?
Just three of them.
Yes. And he already has a house built on that, so he's been there for a couple of years and stuff.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 21-25 for free.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then what we have with ordinance 21-26 is rezoning from C2 to R1, bridges. Again, Earl did say that he had allowed this to happen in a C2 and said, what had happened? But it was also spot zoned because everything on the right, the left, and the property which is across from it is residential. So he didn't understand how that the map was like this, but it was. So an ordinance to amend the zoning map from the town of Montegoal, Tennessee to rezone parcel 02.06, 021.05, 02.00, 0, Grandy County tax map 017, from C2 highway to Business 2 Street to R1 low-density residential.
Earl, I'd also like to say that he messed up on this one. So this was his fault.
Yep, and he didn't think of it being spot zoning, but that's the way that it was. So, what would be the willing counsel on 21-26?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 21-26.
I'll second.
All in favor? The next ordinance is 21-27. This is an ordinance that was brought up by several people. There's several commercial developments that are happening northwest, south. This was hotel industries, as many of y'all know, have been looking at the area. They wanted to know as far as the height from two stories to three. So this would be based on conditions if it passes. It is to increase the building height to a minimum footage, which is, will be recommended by Garrett and Hana, which all is now working on. The ordinance to amend 401, the zoning ordinance for the town of Montegoal, to include provisions to increase the building height of commercial and industry zoning district. So.
I'm sorry, I don't think this was in my packet. Is there the, the attachment behind it?
No, I saw it.
No, this is what the planners.
So it's missing its attachment? Or do you have it?
I don't. Sorry, I'm back to our public. See if this one's in there, Nate? Would you have that one? Look and see if that's in there, because it's the bottom, we're sure of it. So.
Attachment one, setback building lot dimension.
Look at the bottom, the height of the building zone.
Maximum building height. Ah, there is the attachment, the missing attachment to the ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's in yours too.
Well, I thought we were going to set this up so that it was use upon review.
It is supposed to, do they not do raise the use upon review?
It is just changing the ordinance.
Well, then this one I would say let's hold until that language is in there because it would be only a use upon review, and that's what Hannah said that she had done today. Like I said, we listed about seven of these that would come.
Let me make sure I'm reading this. For increased building height, commercial industrial zoning districts, certain zoning districts provided, authorize amendments to zoning map and zoning ordinance, approve recommended zoning ordinance herein described by Mayor Fordwall. Yeah, this, Montegoal zoning ordinance should be amended, and I'll look at the attachment. General height requirements, three stories.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, hang on, building height may be increased as a special exception per 1107 of this ordinance. Developments that exceed the maximum established height shall provide adequate fire suppression in the event that reciprocating fire protection is unavailable.
So that is on a provision basis?
So what does that mean?
No, it's not, yeah, it's, it's saying the maximum building height is three stories, and you can, and you can go even higher.
No, three stories are forty feet, right?
Three stories are forty feet. And pardon, pardon me for not knowing this, but what, what, is that what it is currently?
Currently it's forty feet.
Okay, so this is just adding the asterisk, which says, building height may be increased as a special exception per 1107. Developments that exceed the maximum established height of thirty, of three stories or forty feet, which is the current ordinance, is that right?
That's what, yes, that's what it is.
Developers shall understand the risk that this increase in building height causes in the event of fire. What? Developments that exceed the maximum established height shall provide adequate fire suppression in the event that reciprocating fire protection is unavailable. That sounds a little loosey goosey, that's basically saying, you can make it higher, the way I'm reading it, you can make it higher if you do something.
I tell you why we're doing this, because Earl needs to be here to explain this, but if he'd been here tonight, he would explain the definition whenever we met with one developer today that's looking at a potential project. So the thing is, is, uh, let's let Earl define this the way it's written. He got, it was with, I'm with Garrett when they created this definition, so let's just, let's just pass, take along this one until the next meeting.
I feel, I feel more comfortable with that.
Because again, it was supposed to be written, I thought he said it a little differently, so let's let him, uh, and he's not here, he was at six, so let's let him deal with this one. At the next meeting.
Yeah, and maybe it's explained in Section 1107, but we don't have that, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so. It's not, but you can't just be a blanket to do it, that cannot, that can't pass, but wait. So that one will put us on. Well, I didn't get it till, actually, I didn't get the definition till today, so. All right.
So can we do make a motion to table it?
Yep, I will do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table ordinance 21 dash 27.
Is there any other previous meetings that we need to bring up? Okay. Alden?
I, I do want to bring up, since we're talking about, um, building height, that we've talked a lot about planning and, and downtown planning, and what we want to see as a common vision for Montegoal going forward, and things like taller buildings may or may not fit into that plan, and so I think it's important that we continue to talk about it, and I appreciate you letting us know in the workshop that there's going to be some public meetings to talk about, uh, downtown and land use planning in the town of Montegoal, so that we can all come up with a common vision, um, and it's ordinances like this that make, make that important in my mind. We want to preserve the small town character of Montegoal, and I'm not sure how high a building would do that, but I'm sure that there are people out there who know that better than I, so I look forward to having some, some public meetings where we can talk about how we want to see Montegoal grow as a community.
And those will be scheduled as soon as we can talk with Southeastern Development, a consultant to come in and talk with us. Then we will be bringing in the county mayor, just to ask him to be with us, there'll be public meetings. So the council will be here, planning commission, so it'll be a group effort, so it'll probably take several hours whenever we plan it that day. So we'll try to get it on your day off, Dorian, it's okay. But, um, that, and then again, once we get this done, then we're going to start our town hall meetings, um, the new, the new plan that we're going to develop with the town, Montegoal twenty thirty-five, and work it in a year, about five years, whatever, to where we can have a vision for the town. And adopt it, because the other one wasn't adopted, so. Yes, we'll do that when I get to, Allen? Jess? Dorian?
No.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Dorian and her volunteers and her workers for Christmas, and everybody that made it. The Mountain Go Market, they donated the cookies, we had Jessica volunteers with the new folks that had moved in, they just made the, and of course, the Santa and Mrs. Claus, and everyone that was involved, uh, the weather wasn't great, but we didn't have any injuries, thank God, and that, um, it just went off well. We had the pictures still on the town of Montegoal Facebook, people can download them, but it was just a really good effort for the kids, and there was a lot of community effort to make it happen. And I think that y'all are talking about doing something in the spring and doing some other activities for community as well as movies, is that correct? But thank y'all for that.
Yes.
Another thing, of course, I did leave you a message, I saw Greg out there some home, I don't know if you gave it or not, but I got an email from Nate today about the fundraiser. I talked to Mr. Smith, he is actually sending us the information. We're going to have donations that can be left here, they'll contact Deb, I think he wants to pick them up, he said Friday. So if anyone wants to donate for the, uh, tornado relief for, uh, which county was that?
Obeen.
Obeen County, uh, he said they were not getting a lot of help, they could take any out of donated. He is also setting up tonight a Facebook site where we can provide that on our Facebook and our website, if people want to donate money.
Is that from Chris Smith, the one you're talking about?
Yes, Chris Smith, yeah, that's what that is, it was in that packet, because it's something we received right before we came to the workshop. So that was done, thank you for letting us know, but he said he'd get all the stuff to us, and this, y'all can coordinate with Deb, or we're going to use one of the empty offices in here right now, where donations can be left, and then I can pick them up, people are picking them up. So we want to be part of that effort.
I think, I think Greg is planning to drive some of the, the supplies up there, would you like to, to explain and maybe get, sure, some community support?
Tell me where this is, town of Walden.
Is that it?
It's in West Tennessee.
It's in West Tennessee, uh, near Real Foot Lake.
Okay, okay, I know where it is.
Uh, like a lot of you, uh, I woke up Saturday morning, uh, listening to the cries and pleas revealed from our neighbors up north and west of here, uh, primarily the message that Governor, uh, Leachia, uh, put out. So I generated a, uh, message to our emergency manager, management folks here in Swanee and Nate, just because of our connectivity of employment, uh, hoping they could help us navigate the turbulent, uh, political waters associated with these efforts. Uh, and during those discussions, we had some members from, uh, uh, the, the Salinsburg town reach out to Chris Smith, who's part of this discussion, explaining their dire needs, uh, so we kind of put this on warp speed trying to help these folks out. Uh, so Chris has developed the, uh, tornado relief efforts, uh, that I think he's going to share with you, we can put out, people can donate via Facebook or, uh, BMO, where they can make a donation right to the Citizens Bank there in Bragg County. Primarily, we're putting together some vehicles that we would like, because the town has provided a list of things that they would like to have, such as water, tarps.
We have a list, I think, we normally give, he gave us only us to put on Facebook.
There, there's a number of items that they specifically asked for, there is some community members there that's completely without utilities, without homes. Uh, so we're going to make a strong push, uh, see if we can get us some help.
We will have it on our Facebook, I know GCTV is live right now, so if you want, you know, we can tell them, they can drive up donations here from eight to four. The reason I asked Nate, see, we don't have any available police department twenty-four seven, because they may be out now. Uh, the community center, of course, there's not somebody there all the time, I know there were a couple of businesses we could contact, but he said eight to four would work here, and then he would set up the help fund meeting, or he would have them, where the money can go directly to the bank or to there, so that'll be in the morning. He did mention one of it, for being banned, that, um, if anybody had even like thrift stores and some of the stores, if it's an item that you would use, then they want it, but I'm just going to be like with thrift stores, if people aren't going to wear it, I would, don't donate to people. I did give him the Appalachian Women's Skills contact, which he's going to call in the morning to see if he might have any blankets or non-perishable, you know, some of the totes, tarps, and some of that stuff, we can see, um, about either giving him some money, and, uh, we might as well just go ahead and address that now, if the town wants to donate. If y'all want to donate, you know, some money for the effort, just that way we can go into it, or we can put water, whichever, maybe you'd love, you know what I'm saying? But y'all will have an area here, and I think he said he wanted to pick it up Friday and try to deliver it, it's what he told me this afternoon. He was hoping to do it Wednesday, but he's afraid that he can't get that quick, so.
That's true, I, I, the earliest date we think we could make a delivery would be Wednesday, latest we hope to make a delivery would be Friday.
So, I mean, y'all can pick it up every day, just as Deb wants to drop it off, if anybody wants to drop it off, they're here from eight to four. And that way you know, being, they'll show you the area it'll be, and so if you have any daily pickups you can, but just I need the time that y'all are going to come and get it, and how they can donate money.
Well, thank you, thank you, Alden, for your time and support efforts.
So, if they don't want to donate, uh, material, they want to donate money per se, is there a contact that they can get a hold of?
Yes, uh, the tornado relief efforts, uh, there's an account set up at Citizens Bank, uh, that they can make a donation to, monetary donation. I'm not quite sure, uh, Chris is going to put something out on Facebook, that would probably be the easiest route for most folks. Uh, they could make a check out to the tornado relief efforts, uh, they could provide that to Chris, they could make some type of drop off point, maybe here at the city hall.
That's one of the things, I don't think, except, that's the reason we want to know where he wanted to do it on Facebook, because he's going to send it tonight, he said his wife will send it up, and then we'll put where they can, can drop off the money.
Yeah, as far as materials, we could probably take that, but money, uh, we don't make.
My, my guess is that most of that would be done through Facebook or BMO.
And as soon as. Call GCTV in the morning.
Yeah, y'all have more information, as soon as he sends us the email, we will send it to you all, and then as soon as the lady gets here to put it on Facebook, she'll be putting it on there, and she shares it with anybody she's got a contact with, you know, she'll share it with everybody, and it's also on our website. So, Nate sent the email this afternoon, I responded to Nate, I left you a message, and Chris a message, and he called back, and I already got one of the emails, and he said we'd have the other one tonight.
Thank you, God, and Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And if anybody out there watching needs details on, on the bank information, you can go to the, to the town of Montegoal website, just shoot me an email, and I'll make sure you get that. I'll be working with Chris and Greg on that.
Thank you.
Is it, you said citizens, is that the one here in Montegoal and Tracy City?
It's, I guess they, they're all tied to get it, but, uh, Chris lives in Winchester, so it's the Citizens Bank in Winchester.
It's a bike pass.
It's the Citizens, Strark County, is that correct?
No, he said Citizen State, which is it, Citizen State or Citizens, Strark County?
You know, I, I.
We, we, we'll get that straightened out with Chris.
Well, you can get that with Chris, he's sending us something tonight, we're saying, so if we get it tonight, we can get it on first thing in the morning, and we can get it to GCTV and, you know, dog or media contacts, and I'm sure they'll do it for free, you know, I don't know why they wouldn't. So, that's that, um, that's all we have to discuss, now citizens hearing, we're just, Jared, sir.
I had a question for the chief, but he is not here. It had to do with, uh, succession of rapid fire, thirty caliber, seven point six two, NATO rounds. By a neighbor of mine, uh, who fired, uh, my count, ninety-five rounds one night, one evening, it was still daylight, and about seventy-eight coming in day, and I and several other people called police and asked for it, so they checked, see what's going on, because a lot of this fire was pretty rapid, uh, single shot, I think there was some running of the trigger guard to try and achieve automatic fire, uh, which led me to believe this was definitely not targeted, shooting at a target, it was just wildfire.
Can I ask where it was, Nate, where was the, your neighbor, that's why I'm trying to find out location, because this is a location.
I was just talking to my, uh, residents at seven one seven on the same side. I called the police, the policeman went down there, talked to the fellow, came by and told me he wasn't going to shoot anymore, or has been subsequent shooting. I was just going to see if maybe the, uh, the town councilor gets something done about it.
Well, of course we can, let me see if Jared's still available, I don't know where he's at, let's text Jared and see if he's still here. Do you know who the police officer was that, because this is the first.
I don't know the name of the police, uh, of course, but, uh, let that issue go. I had submitted at your request, a sealed engineering report of evaluation of the, um, hydrological conditions on the RBT property, submitted it to you, and I presume it was to your engineer as well, since he had requested it. I have not heard anything since October, and I just learned, um, is there anything that, uh, to review the, uh, my comments in that report?
No, it's in the process of reviewing, I know that actually he's getting, he's working with the attorney doing that, as you can't redo it. I was not hearing that benefit because, uh, he will be up here Wednesday, I will do a follow up with that, with the rest of the things, I've only met with him one time, and I was emptied off when we did that. So, since that he's been here, I did follow up, he did get the information, he is doing his own review on the information you provide him, and he will have a formal report for you, and I know he's working with the town attorney with what you submitted.
So he is, I, I do expect to receive a formal reply then?
Yes, he will see if we see a formal reply.
Okay, sometime in, during December, you think, or not?
Um, I don't know, but I can find out Wednesday, and I'll see you get a reply on when it will, and again, I know it was in November, I did follow it up, that he was pursuing that and working with the, the town attorney and that, and then I wasn't here for about ten days, because I had a, we had a health issue we had to deal with, so. But I will make a note when it comes Wednesday that we get, if he can give us a timeframe, we will have that for you, but yes, it is being addressed as we speak.
And maybe you could give a heads up on that, if he gives you a reply, he's going to.
That's what I'm saying, I will, if he says it's going to be two weeks, he's finished, or whenever, I'll get your date on that. But right now, honestly, um, the last two weeks we dealing, dealing with, you know, trying to fix these bids out and the other things, and I know he was pursuing it, but that was on the checklist, and he was doing it with, um, the attorney, so, for your response.
Thank you.
Okay, any other citizens?
Two things real quickly, just as comments, first of all, I've heard from a lot of people about the declarations in town, during, and you and your committee and those that did it, it's very well received from one end to the other, so thank you for that, on a personal basis and a messenger delivering messaging. The other thing is, with the height of some of these buildings, as Nate has mentioned, and you all are aware of, fire suppression could mean something like a sprinkler. So when you have a higher building, we may not have the truck at the time, Swanee may or may not have a truck at the time. We want to be aware of heights of buildings, so we can fight a fire, God forbid if there is one. So, um, fire suppression, sprinkler systems, all of the things you see on television in another buildings, I think, or I would ask, that whoever it is, consider that in their review of the buildings.
Well, I know it's in the coach enforcement, because Earl did discuss that today, whenever he had a meeting, but I don't know, it's technical terms, so I'm not going to try to do it, so we'll let him address that.
Just so it's addressed somewhere in the system.
Uh, we have an officer here, do you remember if it was, was it Officer Durham that may have come to your house that night?
I don't remember, was, was this your gentleman, or was it Chief, so I don't know who was on duty that night, uh, I'm trying to find out though.
Well, will you go ahead and explain it to Officer Durham, and then look on the nature on that too?
Well, it was a, I was out blowing leaves, it was in the afternoon, uh, before dark, and, uh, there was a lot of gunfire going off next door to me, thirty caliber or comparable, and, uh, it was rapid fire. Some of it was slow fire, a lot of it was rapid fire, and a lot of it was ringing, the trigger guards, and they make it sound like it's automatic weapons, and, uh, and it's kind of unnerving, particularly when my, uh, my wife goes up to feed the dogs on the same side as that property is, to have that fire. Um, the next, there were about ninety-five rounds squeezed off that day, and then the next day, about seventy-eight to my count. And at that time, I called the police and several other people, people had called the police, a lot of people were calling me thinking I did it, I hadn't shot it. I saw a snake about three years ago. Uh, this was obviously not target practice, it was just rapid fire somewhere in the woods. I don't think it's appropriate, it's unsafe, and there could be people down in the gorge that could get it. And, uh, I asked the policeman to get it stopped or check in on it, he came and told me that he talked to the man, said he wasn't going to be shooting anymore. So I took him in a face play, and I think it was yesterday, had a round go off, so, I don't know if the guy is really legitimately going to cease shooting or not.
Yeah, um, it could turn into a criminal charge if, you know, if it shoots towards your house and hits your house, or rickshades, rickshades or anything like that.
I can tell you it wasn't shot at my house, but some of the neighbors that called me said they, they heard the crack and thumps of a mallet going in their direction. Uh, they didn't, they didn't call the police, they asked me to.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do a report and stuff like that, but I mean, um, when I worked for Estes Springs, we had a city ordinance against shooting in the city altogether.
We definitely have one, that's the reason I, I don't have a location.
Yeah, so, if I can find a location, I mean, and if they do fire shots while I'm working, I can write, you know, the city ordinance. I can write, you know, the city ordinance violation.
Unfortunately, with only, you said he was the only officer on duty that night. Asked me if he could get backup before he went to check, and I didn't know whether the guy, you know, up front, up front or not.
Can you give him that location again?
Okay.
What's the, what's the location, so we can check on the report?
Location is, uh, the first residence north of seven one seven, north of Bluff Circle, on the same side of the street, which is the west side of North Bluff Circle. And I don't know the fellow's name, I understand he's a, a war veteran, maybe has some PTSD.
Um, Sergeant former one out there, he was a, um, Sergeant former, had a black hair, brown shirt, um, kind of short.
Yes.
So.
Could be, yeah, but, yeah, that's with you, it was nighttime, and I was a little nervous.
I know who Travis is, or Alba, the guy that was shooting, actually, he's a, he has, got a bad PTSD, where he usually tried to over a couple of us, so.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm willing to bend, bend over, the neighbors were getting frightened by it. And they, they, they rely on me, I'm an ex-ranger, and they think I can handle it, but I'm not a policeman, you guys.
If I, if I get a call over, I'll be over there.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, the assembly's got a hiking trail right below there, so they, they ain't the same direction, I don't think.
There's not, there is an ordinance with firing a gun in the city limits, that's the reason we were trying to say, you know, one side's in the city and one side's not, you know, the road's not even in the city, so that's the reason.
They're, they're in the city, everything on the west side of North Bluff Circle is in the town of Mont Eagle.
But that's the reason I was asking specifics, because we can send an officer, get a county officer to go out there if it is the other side, because that is county, so. So we'll check into that as well, sir, see what we can do. Is there any other citizens that wants to add? If not, do we have a question to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?